Okay. Good morning and welcome to the Lyon County Planning Commission, Tuesday, January tenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Planning Commission meetings are open to the public and members of the public may attend in person, and the meetings are also virtual and the public may attend via virtual Zoom. Public comment. Lyon County allows the following alternatives for public comment. If you're attending the virtual Zoom meeting, public comment may be provided by raising your hand and requesting to provide public comment. This can occur in several ways, including by dialing star nine from your phone to raise your hand and request to speak for public comment. To unmute yourself, dial star six. You can also provide public comment for this meeting by sending an email to Shannon Gentinen at S Gentinen at LyonCounty.org the day prior to the posted meeting date. Be sure to type "public comment" in the subject line. And in light of recent events yesterday, if you're on Zoom, you'll have to raise your hand and staff here will unmute you. Written public comments may also be mailed to the Lyon County Community Development Office at twenty-seven South Main Street, Yarrington, Nevada, eight-nine-four-four-seven, but all public comments must be received prior to the date of the meeting if the comments are to be included in the supplemental materials. Any written public comment received the day of the meeting will be compiled and added as supplemental materials to the county's website and distributed to the Planning Commission within twenty-four hours after the meeting. Members of the public may attend the meeting in person at the Greg Honeywell Lyon County Commission Chambers, twenty-seven South Main Street, Yarrington, Nevada. Action will be taken on all items unless otherwise noted. No action will be taken on any item until it's properly agendized. To avoid meeting disruptions, please place cell phones and beepers in the silent mode or turn them off during the meeting. The Board reserves the right to take items in a different order to accomplish business in the most efficient manner. Items may be combined for consideration and items may be pulled or removed from the agenda at any time. Restrictions on comments by the general public. Any such restrictions must be reasonable and may restrict the time, place, and manner of the comments, but may not restrict comments based on viewpoint. Item one, we have roll call. We have Connie, our newest member Greg Clausen, Audrey Allen, and Loretta Sell and myself in chambers. And I see we have Michael and Sean on Zoom. Item two, Pledge of Allegiance. Loretta, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to your flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic of Canada, which stands one nation, one government, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and moral health.
Item three, Public Participation. No action will be taken on any item until it's properly agendized. Members of the public who wish to address the Planning Commission may approach the podium and speak on matters related to the Lyon County Planning Commission, but not on items appearing on the agenda. Speakers are asked to state their name for the record and to sign and print their name on the form at the lectern. Comments are limited to three minutes per person or topic. The Commission reserves the right to reduce this three-minute time limit as well as limit the total time for public comment. If your item requires extended discussion, please request the Chair to calendar the matter for a future Planning Commission meeting. The Planning Commission will not restrict comments based on viewpoint. The same applies to public testimony on each agenda item. The Chair may reopen public participation at any time during the meeting. No action may be taken upon a matter raised under this item of the agenda until the matter itself has been specifically included on an agenda as an item upon which action may be taken. Item four, Review and Adoption of the Agenda. Has everyone had a chance to review it? Does anyone have any comments or changes?
I move we adopt today's agenda.
I'll second that.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Okay, for possible action, five A for possible action, election of the two thousand and twenty-three Planning Commission Chair.
Madam Chair, I'd like to nominate you as Chair, Penny Hendricks.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
Madam Chair, we have to do a public comment on that.
Okay. Is there any public comment?
See any online, Andrews?
No public comment.
Okay, no public comment. Do we need to vote again?
Just, no, just as long as we get that in.
All right, item five B for possible action, election of the two thousand and twenty-three Planning Commission Vice Chair. And I would like to nominate Audrey.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Sorry, Madam Chair, we should do a public comment before.
Sorry. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Five C for possible action, election of the two thousand and twenty-three Planning Commission Secretary.
Madam Chair, I'd like to nominate Sean Keaton.
I'll second that.
Okay, is there any public comment? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's all unanimous. Okay. Item six for possible action, approval of minutes. For possible action, to approve the minutes for December thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two meeting. Has everyone had a chance to review those?
Yes.
And do we have comments? I think there's probably a correction in there.
I just had one correction.
Yes.
And it's on page one. It's down, second to the last paragraph, and the last paragraph. I may have, I'm an awfully busy girl. I motioned, then I seconded.
I motioned that one and you seconded.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, are there any other comments or corrections?
Madam Chairman, I will abstain since I was not present.
Okay. We're ready for a motion, I guess.
I move that we approve the minutes from the January tenth?
December thirteenth.
Yes.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Thank you, Loretta.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And so it's six and one abstention. Okay, item seven, Presentation and Reading of Miscellaneous Correspondence. And I think the only thing we have is the stuff that came for agenda items, right?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Item eight, Advisory Board Reports, and we've just pretty much discussed that. So, Public Hearing Items, nine A for possible action, to forward a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners for a conditional use permit request from John Miles to allow for the expansion of a non-conforming use single-family residential in the CC dash community commercial zoning district for the purpose of constructing a detached garage at one fifty-five Pike Street in the Comstock Historical District Dayton, APN zero-zero-six-zero-five-two-dash-zero-two PLZ twenty-twenty-two-dash-one-eight-nine.
Good morning.
Good morning. Bill Roth, Senior Planner. Before you today, we have a project for detached garage in Comstock Historic Area of Dayton. So here right there shows you the property there. It's off of Pike Street. The proposed garage would go at the back of the house where it'd be accessed off of that alleyway off of Logan. It runs perpendicular to Logan. This is a Google Earth image of the property. The Compadre's Mexican Restaurant is to the right, which is actually north of the property, right next door. The applicant, John Miles, is here today. That's his yellow house there. And he owns the property going back, and then he also owns the property just to the south, which is left of this lane. And then if we were to wrap around Pike Street and go down Logan Alley, and then wrap around again, this is that back alley there, and the arrow showing roughly where the property is located. And so the proposal is to take access off of that unnamed alley to get into the proposed detached garage. So the zoning currently under Title fifteen is community commercial. And as you can see from this table here, a detached garage, which would be considered a residential accessory structure, is not permitted under the current zoning. However, we do have a process for properties such as this, where the house was created prior to the establishment of the commercial zoning. So it is a legally established, non-conforming use the houses. And so adding this garage to serve that residential use and serve the family that lives there would be considered an expansion of a legally existing non-conforming use, and that requires a conditional use permit. This is a proposed site plan by the applicant. You can see the house on the right, in the middle there with the star, that's the proposed garage, and then the driveway going back to that alley. So it's basically a one-car garage, a little area for storage. And these are the elevations. At the top left, you can see the north elevation, so that's actually what would be facing Compadre's Mexican Restaurants. And no windows on that elevation. I bet it's really important for a garage, but you know, in terms of privacy, not having a window on there is a good idea. At the lower right-hand corner, you can see the west elevation, so that's what someone would see if they were walking along that back alley, looking into the property. And I should note that the Comstock Historic District Commission provided a letter of appropriateness already for this proposal for this garage. So in essence, it's historically compatible for that, for their review. Again, so when we add to a non-conforming use, we have to go through the conditional use permit findings. And so here's just some highlights there. Elaborated on a little bit more in the staff report. But key points is that the master plan does support the, you know, long-term maintenance of historic properties. And it's a good thing to add a detached garage. In this case, it facilitates the long-term use of that historic property as a house in its, you know, traditional setting. And, you know, and obviously doesn't crack, sorry, increase any sort of vehicular traffic. It would just be to serve the family that's already there. And so here's just another aerial, and I'm available for questions as is the applicant. Thank you.
Okay, does anyone have any questions for Bill? Okay. Thank you. Would the applicant like to speak at all? Okay. Okay, so.
I'm in a motion.
Okay.
Based on the aforementioned findings, I move that the Planning Commission.
Wait.
Oh.
And we have to have public participation.
Oh, yeah, we do.
Is there any public comment on this item?
I don't see any answers.
Okay, seeing none, go ahead, Loretta.
Okay, I'll motion, based on the aforementioned findings, I move that the Planning Commission recommend approval to the Board of Commissioners of the request by John Miles for a conditional use permit to allow detached garage on a zero-point-one acre parcel in the community commercial zoning district assessed by by Pike Street, access, sorry, access by Pike Street north of Tyler in Dayton location on APN zero-zero-six-dash-zero-five-two-dash-zero-two, subject to the following conditions of approval, one through six, and it's PLZ dash twenty-twenty-two-dash-one-eight-nine.
A second.
Okay, have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, motion carries unanimously. Item nine B for possible action, to approve a request from Brett and Toni Allen for a tentative parcel map to subdivide a three-point-six-three acre parcel into two parcels, the smallest being one-point-seven-three acres located at sixteen Jones Road in Mound House, APN zero-one-six-dash-two-thirty-one-dash-eleven, PLZ twenty-twenty-two-dash-one-ninety-three. Louis?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning, Commissioners. Louis Carriola, Senior Planner, presenting tentative parcel map for the alleys. The subject parcels located in Mound House, north of Highway fifty. Highway fifty access is provided by an intersection with Red Rock Road, and then Jones Road provides the frontage along this subject parcel. The master plan designation for the site is employment, and as you can see there with the shading and the image, the entire area shares the same master plan designation. The zoning for the site is still M1 from our inspired development code Title ten. For the consistency matrix, the site is subject to heavy industrial zoning. It is within suburban character district, and again, you'll see with the similar shading, the site shares zoning most of the property in the area. The site is developed and has numerous uses that are ongoing, including outdoor storage of construction materials, vehicle and truck storage. There are three structures shown in this image and one that's not. It's called a tent structure from the applicant. These uses are not proposed to expire. However, we'll see as I move forward here in the presentation, the majority of the uses will be on one parcel in the new configuration. The existing frontage is on the south side there along Jones Road. It's important to note that Jones Road is not an improved roadway, so it's essentially just dirt and hasn't been paved. This is the proposed lot division on the west parcel. North is at the top. The west parcel is one-point-seven-three acres, and you can see the image on the right includes the existing structures. Notably, they would meet the setbacks within the zoning district, so the new parcel configuration wouldn't conflict with the location of the existing structures. And on the east parcel, parcel two, one-point-nine acres, that's that tent structure in pink. I did leave a gap here for the applicant to make any comments. I'm not sure if if they wanted to or not, since I did already propose or did already display the map. Nope, okay. It looks like they're okay. I'm just going to move forward. Thank you. Okay, so as is typical for parcel maps, planning does distribute the proposed land division to internal entities and agencies for comment, one of them being the Lyon County Utilities Department. Director Bruketa from Lyon County Utility District did submit a letter describing the existing water utilities, and it is included, that letter in its entirety as an attachment in the staff report. As a result of that letter, staff has provided a recommended condition of approval, number five, that would require the applicant prior to recordation of the final map for the land division to comply with all the directions provided by Director Bruketa. Notably, and I made a summary here for this slide, because I know it's difficult to read all the text in the letter. There is no sewer service in this area, which is typical in Mound House. It's true for all the properties. There is, however, a six-inch water main that runs from Red Rock Road along the Jones Road frontage on the property, or at, in in front of proposed parcel two, eastern parcel, and it dead-ends there. And as I'm sure you may be aware, dead-end water lines sometimes do provide some issues for the utility district. At this time, the district does not require expansion, extensions, or any modification to the existing water lines. However, post parcel division, where new developments had come in for that eastern parcel, for parcel two, the Lyon County Utility District reserves the right to compel a future developer to pay for any expansions or extensions of the public water system as a result of the Lyon County Utilities Engineer running the model to see if the capacity, the pressure, the availability of water for the proposed use is already sufficient. So that's what that letter sort of summarizes. My understanding is the applicant is accepting of that condition, although again, we do have applicants' representatives online. If they had any issues with that, in the conversations I had with them prior to this meeting, they did not. There's a second condition that was condition number six, that is the result of comments from internal distribution, this time from the Lyon County Roads Department. Most notably, that Jones Road is not paved, and that prior to recordation of the final map, at the applicant's expense, Jones Road must be improved to the specifications from the Roads Department. I did again discuss this topic with the applicant's representatives, and they seemed, or they were, again, accepting of this condition. The rest of the conditions within staff's recommended conditions are all fairly boilerplate and standard. With that, I'm available for questions, as again, the applicant's representatives are. Thank you.
Thank you. I did have one question on condition of approval, six A. It reads, six inches of three-quarter inch type-two base spec base on three inches of AC. Shouldn't it be reversed?
You know, that language came directly from the Roads Department. That may be a typo. I noticed that too, and I cut and pasted.
It seems like it should be the base, I mean, the AC goes over the base.
I agree. I think it's a typo. The condition does read that the applicant must meet the direction for their recommendation for paving.
Okay.
So, yes, you are correct, ma'am. I just didn't want to change the language, and I only noted that too late.
Okay. Does anyone else have any questions for Louis? Okay.
It looks like the applicant representative has some comments.
Okay. Can you unmute him?
I believe you can unmute yourself now.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Counsel. This is Robert LaRiviere and Deanne Schreiber for the applicant. Question for Louis. On six A, we were discussing, aren't we only paving that portion of the new parcel that I was under the assumption it was two-hundred-foot by twenty-four-foot? Or we paving the whole roadway from Red Rock?
The whole roadway.
Oh.
The whole roadway. You have to provide public ac-, you have to provide public access to the newly created property.
Okay, so it is the whole roadway. Okay. Yeah, we were not sure. We were not clear on that, Louis.
Apologies.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there any public comment on this issue?
Can I, can I ask the applicant if they're okay with that?
Yes.
With that?
Yes.
New information that they're accepting?
Yes, are, having received the clarification on paving the whole road, are you amenable to that condition of approval?
To be perfectly honest with you, we'll have to advise our client of this, but if this is one of the conditions, he will have to abide by this. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? And any other public comment? Seeing none, we're ready for a motion.
I'll make that motion. Based on findings one, two, three, I move that the Lyon County Planning Commission approved the tentative parcel map request for Brett and Toni Allen, APN zero-one-six-dash-two-three-one-dash-eleven, PLZ dash two-zero-two-two-dash-one-nine-three, subject to conditions one through seventeen.
I'll center that.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries unanimously. Item nine C for possible action, to approve a request from HSKS LLC for a tentative parcel map to subdivide a zero-point-nine-two acre parcel into two parcels, the smallest being zero-point-four-six acres located at thirty-one-twenty Elm Street in Silver Springs, APN zero-one-eight-dash-four-one-four-dash-zero-six, PLZ twenty-twenty-two-dash-one-forty-three.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, Louis Carriola, Senior Planner, presenting tentative parcel map for HSKS LLC. Subject parcels located in Silver Springs, west of Highway ninety-five A. The image on the left is your vicinity map. On the right is a zoomed-in aerial image from the county's GIS system. Something noted in the staff report and a couple of the slides here is that the parcel boundaries are shifted slightly south in this area on our system, slightly south versus the aerial image, so you can probably see where the actual parcel lines are, looking at that image. Notably, the primary access is on Elm Street, but seeing the configuration here of the parcel that runs east-west, there's a secondary access on Mono Street on the east side. Similar to the last item, Mono Street is an unimproved public roadway that is not maintained by the county at this time. The master plan designation for the site is suburban residential. You can see the distinction between suburban residential there with north, south, and west of the subject site, and then mixed use to the east. The zoning for the site is suburban residential, twelve-thousand square feet, minimum parcel size. Last year, you would have seen a zone change for the site. I think it's notable to point out that to the south of the subject parcel is multi-family zoning and multi-family development. We're again looking at the aerial view to zoom in on existing development, which currently consists of one singular manufactured home on the western side. The proposed land division, relatively simple, two parcels, just over twenty thousand square feet each. Obviously, they would both meet the minimum parcel size of twelve thousand square feet. And once again, just like the last item, the setbacks for SR twelve thousand zoning will be met in the new parcel configurations by the existing structure. I'm fairly certain we can move right past any presentation from the applicant, unless they put their hand up or wanted to make a presentation. Once again, we did have distribution internally for this parcel map and received commentary from the Lyon County Roads Department. This time, condition number five is a direct result of the Roads Department's input. And essentially, I'll just, I'll just read it. Prior to recordation of the final map, the applicant is required to improve Mono Street to Lyon County's gravel road standard from the southern boundary of existing parcels limits north to Lake Avenue. I use the county's GIS system measuring tool to put an image here to show that length. Looks like it's less than six-hundred-and-thirty feet. But it is the gravel road standard in this case, so it's less intensive than the previous item we heard where it's in an industrial area. This is proposed residential use, so gravel road standard for the Roads Department is sufficient. Staff included the other standard recommended condition of approval for parcel maps. And with that, I'm available for questions. Not positive on the applicant's attendance or need to comment. Thank you.
Does the applicant, first, does anybody have any questions for Louis? Okay, I don't see any questions there, so would the applicant like to comment at all? Doesn't look like it. Okay.
I don't see any.
Is there any public comment on this item? Is there any public comment on this item?
No, non zoom.
Okay, don't see any. So we're ready for a motion on this one.
I'll make a motion. Based on the affirmation findings one through three. I moved that the Lyon County Planning Commission approved the tentative parcel map request for. HSKS LLC APN zero, one, eight, dash, four, one, four, dash, zero, six. PLZ two, zero, two, two, dash, one, four, three, subject to the following conditions of approval as indicated.
I'll second that.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. That passes unanimously. Item nine D for possible action, Brian Gock continued from the December thirteenth, twenty twenty two meeting. To approve a request from Brian Gock for a tentative parcel map to subdivide a twenty four point eight one acre parcel. Into four parcels, the smallest being five acres located at nine, seven, two, five Iroquois Trail in Stagecoach. APN zero, one, five, dash, seven, six, one, dash, thirty one, PLZ twenty twenty two, dash, one, eighty six.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Louis Carriola, Senior Planner, presenting tentative parcel map for Brian Gock. This subject parcel is located in Stagecoach, north of Highway fifty. The intersection of Highway fifty. Boyer Lane, and then Iroquois Trail provides. The vehicular access to the parcel frontage. Master plan designation is low density residential. As you can see, the entire region is likewise master planned. The zoning, I apologize, the color is a little awkward there. It's roughly centered. Existing zoning is RR three from our inspired title ten, subject to rural residential five acre minimum. Zoning per our current development code. The proposed land division is here. The largest parcel, parcel to the southwest, nine point three, nine acres. The north, exposed northwest. Parcel with the frontage up on Iroquois Trail to the north is five point four two parcels. Then parcels three and four are to the east, each of them five acres. Of course, all meeting the minimum parcel size. There is an existing right of way access. From Iroquois Trail extending south into the existing parcel configuration. It's highlighted yellow there. Where the the extension of that into the subject parcel would. Then it would extend the the public right, the access easement, I apologize. Access easement into the new configuration. And thereby provide access to all three of the southern parcels. Northwestern parcel would still hold on to Iroquois Trail accessing. I, I'm not sure if the applicant representative is here or is present. On Zoom to make any comments. The reason there's a break in this project is the site is the subject of some ongoing code enforcement issues. Specifically, a garage barn structure was constructed and currently community development and code enforcement. Department is working with the applicant to get that structure permitted. From the planning department's perspective. This is a residential zoning district, so simply having the existing structure. Permitted post-construction, meaning an engineer would have to sign off on the sign. And then it would have to be approved that it was constructed to specifications per the IBC. In addition, the applicant is being required to receive approval for a residential structure. This would then make existing development. Approved, existing approved development consistent with residential zoning. In other words, we're not going to approve land division with a parcel that would only have an accessory use. So if they only have the barn in a residential zoning district, that would be recognized as accessory. They need to receive approval for a residential structure as well. Staff has included recommended condition, I believe it's sixteen. Just can't remember which one it is. I think it's sixteen, just blocked out by the. Staff is included a recommended condition number fifteen. That we will not record the final map. Until all code violations have been resolved. These code violations have been the reasoning for the applicant's multiple requests. For continuances on this item, but at this point, staff is comfortable. Again, moving through this tentative map and public hearing process. But then restricting any recordation for final land division of the final map until code enforcement has been satisfied. So with that, I can wrap up my presentation. And again, I'm not sure the applicant's representatives have anything to comment upon.
Audrey, did you have a question?
Yeah, that was gonna be my question on, you know, how is this process moving forward and. You know, and I see that they're not going to be able to record it until, until all of this has been satisfied. So, and that's a year, right?
That's a good point. Yes, ma'am. I mean, that is included in our conditions. My understanding in speaking with County Manager Haskin is that. They have submitted for. For approval of the barn and that they have had or received an engineer's stamp and approval for that and are ongoing. In their efforts to submit for the residential structure.
I also had another question, Louis. Oh, you want to speak? Go ahead, Andrew.
Yeah, just to answer that question, Andrew Haskin, County Manager, for the record. So we won't approve the barn structure until a house has been approved as well. We, we just can't issue a permit on. Accessory structure without the primary use of the property being. Existing or at least permitted through the, going through the permit process. So. I just wanted to provide some clarification because Louis had talked about. How we were working with him on the permit for the barn. That's true. However, we won't issue a permit for the barn and file that until. The houses put in place. Or, or, excuse me, the permit for the houses put in place.
Okay. I had a question about the water. I saw that GID said that they cannot service this property. Is that correct?
I believe that's correct. Yes, the future development on the site would be required to receive. Approval.
Well, permits.
For wells.
Okay. Does anyone else have any questions for Louis? Seeing none, would the applicant like to speak? Andrew, there's a hand up.
All right, now hold on just a second. There you go.
Yes, Madam Chair and Planning Commissioners.
For the record.
Robert LaRiviere, applicant Deanne Schreiber. The applicant, we work for Brian Gock. Just a couple of comments. Our client is aware and is in the process of cleaning up the site for the backhoe. He's, he's working diligently on that. And we worked with the applicant and his structural engineer, and they did submit plans last month for both. The permits for the new building and the existing shed structure. And number three, our client is aware that they will be capping off that, that water line that's not going to be usable. The well.
Okay, does anyone have any questions for the applicant? Okay, seeing none. Do you have more for us, Louis? Okay.
I need to go back.
Okay, can you, yes.
Robert LaRiviere for the applicant. I'm in the uncharted territory. I don't know what to do, but. Our client got back to was an item nine B, Brett Allen regarding that roadway. And I don't know how to go further, but he's not going to be financially able to pave the whole seven hundred and something feet road. So I'm in uncharted territory and I apologize. I don't know what we should.
I'm sorry, that's a different agenda item. So we'll have to move back to ninety.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, do we have, do we have any public comment on this item? I see a hand up.
Amanda Bernand, you should be able to unmute.
Yes, good morning, Amanda Bernand, B R I N N A N D. And I just wanted to point out there is a Stagecoach Advisory Board report attached, and there were some concerns raised at that meeting. And I'm still not sure if all the roads are on private property. And if they're not, will any of them be brought up to county standards? And then there was the code enforcement enforcement issue, which I, I heard you discuss. There were also other issues that were brought up, such as a large pile of debris. And RVs on the property and. If those have been, if anything has been remedied on the property, I guess. I, I guess I do have a concern to go forward with this when there are still code enforcement issues on the property. And then I did hear the applicant state that the well will be abandoned and just want to make sure that'll officially be done through the state of Nevada. Water Board. And then flooding was one of the adjacent property owners brought up that there. The county had previously constructed a drainage ditch to divert water through this property. And he did let me know that ditch is, is currently running a lot of water in it. And I, I, I'm not sure if this will be addressed so that if this ditch is removed, I don't know if adjacent properties would flood, but if this has been looked at. And then some of my own concerns are that lately on the planning agendas, there've been a lot of parcels that'll be being split into smaller parcels. And I'm guessing these will all be sold as separate lots. And I have two concerns on this. The first is being that. A lot of these parcels, especially in Stagecoach, are on non-maintained county roads that weren't originally built to county standards. And as more and more lots are split, there's more and more increased traffic. These roads continue to degrade and some of them will not, they'll become undrivable with a two-wheel drive vehicle. Which will adversely affect existing residents that can drive on it currently, but they may not be able to in the future. And the second concern I have is related to domestic wells. As water rights aren't required for a domestic well, and these also increase as properties are split that are not on a public utility. That, that puts additional stresses on our water resources. And I don't know if the groundwater models used are incorporate the domestic wells and also incorporate the, all these additional domestic wells. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Do any of you have any additional questions before we have a motion? If not, we are ready for a motion.
Madam Chairman. Based on the aforementioned findings one through three. I move that the Lyon County Planning Commission approve the tentative parcel map request for Brian Gock APN zero, one, five, dash, seven, six, one, dash, three, one. PLZ dash two, zero, two, two, dash, one, eight, six, subject to the following conditions of approval, one through sixteen.
I second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, say nay. Okay, are there any nays?
Mr. Keating.
John Keating said nay. Okay. So six, two, one, and motion carries. Recession to convene is the Lyon County Public Lands Management Advisory Board. Item ten, public participation. No action will be taken on any item until it's properly agendized. Is there any public comment on public lands? Seeing none. Item eleven, action items. We have no action items. Item twelve, board member comments. Does anyone have any comments on public lands? Seeing none. Item fourteen, public participation. No action will be taken on any item until it's properly agendized. Last chance for public comment on public lands management.
Item thirteen. Sorry.
Oh, future agenda items. Do we have any future agenda items? Okay. We will adjourn to reconvene as the Lyon County Planning Commission. Item fifteen, staff comments and Commissioner comments.
Andrew Haskin, Lyon County Manager, for the record. So we didn't have any planning items on the last. Board of County Commissioners agenda, or excuse me, the January Board of County Commissioners agenda. So I have nothing to update there. I'll keep my comments brief this morning as I'm heading to. The EOC in Dayton to, to address some of the flooding issues out there. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Does anyone have any? Questions or anything for Andrew? Thank you, Andrew. Item sixteen, public participation. No action will be taken on any item until it's properly agendized. Members of the public who wish to address the planning commission may approach the podium and speak. On matters related to the Lyon County Planning Commission, but not on items appearing on the agenda. Comments are limited to three minutes per person or topic and will not be restricted based on viewpoint. No action may be taken upon a matter raised under this item of the agenda until the matter itself. Has been specifically included on an agenda as an item upon which action may be taken. Is there any public comment? Seeing none. Item seventeen, we are adjourned.
He's got his hand up. Hold on. Sorry. Can we go back?
To be.
Okay, yeah, let me get back. So we're gonna reconvene here and revisit. Item nine B, if the developers representative would like to speak.
You should be able to unmute now.
Madam Chair and Commissioners, Robert LaRiviere for the applicant of Brett and Tony Allen. We did, we apologize for this on item nine B. Our client did get back to us. And it's going to be cost prohibitive of him to pave this whole roadway since a lot of this roadway is not really paved anyways. So we don't know what to do at this point.
Is that something he should work out with you, or is that something we need to correct here?
Louis Carriola, Senior Planner. I don't know that there's any way that Lyon County Community Development may recommend approval. Of a land division without. Paved public access being provided.
Want to continue this?
It is just a standard.
So if he can't. Meet with the conditions of approval, we need to reevaluate. And take another vote or how to. Yeah, that's.
Andrew Haskin, County Manager, there. This item's already been voted on. He would, staff would. If, if it weren't for that condition, staff would be recommending denial. So. So, yeah. We can certainly have a conversation with the applicant's representative and staff. And if they choose to apply for an amended condition later on. They could, but again, staff would likely be recommending.
Okay, so we won't take any further action. Okay.
Thank you for your time.
So, everything else we have gone through, so we are adjourned.